Good morning, everyone. We're going to get started. Welcome to the New Technology Add-on Payment Town Hall Meeting for Fiscal Year 2018. I'd like to thank everyone for traveling and being with us from near and far, and for those of us who are joining us via live webcast. I especially want to extend a warm welcome to all the applicants that are going to present this morning. We have a full agenda, and I'm going to begin by introducing our keynote speaker for this morning, who I'd like to thank very much for taking time out of her busy schedule to be with us. She is the Director of the Hospital and Ambulatory Policy Group, Carol Blackford.
Thank you. And I would also like to welcome all of our applicants, presenters, and attendees, as well as those of you who are listening on the phone and participating via livestream. We appreciate all of your efforts to travel from near and far to attend us, our 15th Annual Inpatient Perspective Payment System New Tech Town Hall Meeting. We are pleased to be able to hold this meeting and hope that you find the information provided to be useful. As mentioned, I'm Carol Blackford. I'm the Director of the Hospital and Ambulatory Policy Group within the Center for Medicare. I came to HAP, as we call it, a little less than a year ago. So this is my first opportunity to be a part of the New Tech Town Hall meeting today, and I am pleased to be here with you. As we indicated in our Federal Register notice, which announced this meeting, the purpose today is for CMS to listen to your comments and your recommendations regarding whether the technologies or services that have applied for the IPPS New Tech Add-on Payment for Fiscal Year 2018 represent a substantial clinical improvement, and for the public to engage in a meaningful conversation about the clinical merits of each application being discussed today. Part of CMS's vision is to open our programs to full partnership with the entire healthcare community to improve quality and efficiency in an evolving healthcare system. With respect to medical technology, we recognize that there is constant development of new technology, as well as an evolution of existing technologies that improves upon what is already available. Some of these new technologies can be very expensive, and in order to reduce some of the financial barriers associated with the high cost of certain new technologies in hospitals under the IPPS, Medicare offers additional payments for innovative technologies that are new, costly, and that are a substantial clinical improvement over the existing technologies, so that our beneficiaries will have access to these innovations in a way that might -- innovations that might otherwise be too expensive to be made available in the inpatient hospital setting. As both a purchaser of healthcare for Medicare beneficiaries and a manager of the Medicare trust funds, we at CMS are committed to ensuring access to important medical innovations that improve the diagnosis and treatment for our beneficiaries, while at the same time ensuring that this is done in a fiscally responsible manner. I would also like to mention that as part of our commitment to ensuring access to beneficial new technologies that improve the medical care of -- provided to our Medicare beneficiaries, and in an effort to engage industry stakeholders and our activities around involving new technology, CMS created the Council on Technology and Innovation, or the CTI, which oversees the agency's cross-cutting priorities on coordinating coverage, coding, and payment processes for Medicare with respect to new technologies and procedures, including drug therapies, as well as promoting the exchange of information on new technologies between CMS and other entities. And to improve the understanding around our processes for coverage, coding, and payment, and how to access those processes, the CTI developed what we call the Innovator's Guide to Navigating CMS. If you have not taken a look at that guide, I encourage you to do so. It is available on our website, and it outlines key decision points, regulation cycles, application deadlines, and points of contact where applicable. And the intent in creating this guide and making it available was to consolidate all of the information around accessing the various silos and access points, which are already available in various documents, but this condenses it down into one single user-friendly resource document. It's been available for several years now on the web, so if you haven't taken a look at it, we encourage you to do that. And we, of course, welcome comments from the public on how to keep that document current and useful. Again, let me say that I am pleased to see the participation of all of you here today, although I noticed there's no one -- very few people in the front row. I understand everyone wants to get a good view of the slides, so I won't take it personally. We are committed to working together with hospitals, physicians, and other providers and manufacturers of medical devices and pharmaceuticals to provide maximum access to up-to-date, high-quality healthcare for our beneficiaries. We believe it is important to maintain an open dialogue on the issues of how new technology is introduced into all of our Medicare payment systems. So thank you for the opportunity to address you this morning, and I trust that we will have an informative and useful meeting today. Thank you again, and I will now turn the mic back to our New Tech team. Thank you.
Thank you again, Carol, for your remarks, and thank you for taking the time to be with us here today. Before we begin, I'd like to reiterate the new technology criteria. A technology must meet the following three criteria. The medical service or technology must be new. The medical service or technology must be costly, such that the DRG rate otherwise applicable to discharges involving the medical service or technology is determined to be inadequate. And lastly, the service or technology must demonstrate a substantial clinical improvement over existing services and technologies. That being said, the purpose of today's town hall meeting is to discuss substantial clinical improvement. We posted tracking forms on our CMS website, and the remaining seven applicants for Fiscal Year 2018 will present today. As a brief reminder, written comments are due by 5:00 PM Eastern Standard Time on Friday, March 3, 2017. The public can send these written comments via email to our New Tech mailbox, and that is newtech, N-E-W-T-E-C-H, at cms.hhs.gov, or comments can be mailed to our center at the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services, Division of Acute Care, New Technology Team. The mail stop is C-4-08-06, 7500 Security Boulevard, Baltimore, Maryland, 21244. We'll move into the comments from our public on the agenda item. We have one scheduled public commenter this morning from AdvaMed. Is the AdvaMed representative here? Yes, thank you.
So, good morning. I'm Richard Price, and I'm here from the Advanced Medical Technology Association, otherwise known as AdvaMed. And first of all, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present our views on new technology add-on payments under Medicare's inpatient IPPS. I'll begin by saying, earlier this year, we were pleased to see in the final fiscal year 2017 IPPS rule approval of five of seven different applications that CMS reviewed for NTAPs, the largest number in any one year since the beginning of the program, our own research shows. While this outcome is a positive one, we continue to need to note that only slightly more than a third of applications, that's 26 out of 72, applications have been approved since 2003. For this reason, we believe that it is appropriate for us to continue to advocate for changes to CMS regulations and policies to ensure that Medicare beneficiaries have access to innovative treatments and technologies. We note that CMS can implement each of our specific recommendations through changes in regulations, and our recommendations do not require changes in law for CMS to move forward. I'd like to briefly review our eight recommendations at this point. Our first recommendation, AdvaMed recommends increasing the add-on payment levels from 50% to 80% of the difference between the standard MSDRG payment and the cost of the procedure with the new technology. This is a critically needed reform that will encourage more medical technology innovation and beneficiary access to that technology. We note that an analysis by Avalere Health found that despite receiving $40.5 million in NTAP payments between Fiscal Year 2006 and Fiscal Year 2013, hospitals also received $23.2 million in outlier payments on these same cases. We argue that this demonstrates that NTAP payments are set at too low a threshold to cover the costs incurred by hospitals for using the new technology. Our companies hear from hospitals that they are experiencing significant losses in certain cases when they offer these new and innovative services. Our second recommendation, local Medicare administrative contractors should be prohibited from denying coverage and add-on payments for new medical services or technologies approved by the secretary. We note that during 2015, two local MACs issued coverage determinations for medical technology that CMS had approved for NTAP, effectively denying beneficiaries in many states access to the new technology that met each of the three criteria we just heard described, that CMS must consider in making decisions for NTAP approval, and by implication, they lost approval for coverage and payment in those areas. While we understand how this could happen, we cannot understand why it should happen. Number three, CMS should use the most recently available cost data and information available, using data from surveys of hospitals and suppliers conducted by the secretary, data from private payers, health plans, physician specialty societies, as well as commercial price data and data from manufacturer invoices, for assigning new technologies to appropriate MSDRGs. This will ensure greater accuracy in assigning the new technology procedures to the most appropriate MSDRG. Four, the process for defining the period of newness for purposes of add-on payments should be simplified. Although CMS has taken steps to consider delaying the start of the newness period in cases wherein applicant can demonstrate a documented delay in market availability, CMS should simplify the process by requiring the use of the later of either the assignment of a new code or FDA approval as a controlling date for starting add-on payments. Five, the criteria for newness should be modified so that certain 510K devices are not unfairly excluded from NTAP. These criteria should be expanded to include products that involve a significant technological change that do not raise different questions of safety and effectiveness, in comparison, that is, to the predicate device, and result in enhanced clinical advantages or reduced costs over an episode of care outside the payment for the indexed MSDRG, even though they use the same or similar mechanism of action or are assigned to the same MSDRG. In addition, the secretary, we believe, should not disqualify a new service or technology as not meeting the newness criteria on the basis of a finding of a de minimis number of claims in Medicare claims data. Six, the criteria for newness should be modified to take a broader -- to take a broader view of a new mechanism of action to recognize an innovative deployment mechanism as substantially different. Seven, the criteria applied in making substantial improvement determinations should be broadened to require, in addition to existing criteria, that the secretary consider whether the new technology or medical services -- service meets one or more of the following criteria: first, results in a reduction of the length of stay in a hospital; two, improves patient quality of life; three, creates long-term clinical efficiencies in treatment; four, addresses patient-centered objectives as defined by the secretary; or five, meets such other criteria as the secretary may specify. And our last recommendation, an entity that submits an application for NTAP payments should be entitled to administrative review of an adverse determination by the secretary. This will provide a safeguard, both for the manufacturer submitting an application, as well as to the beneficiary for ensuring access to the innovative technology that improves patient care outcomes. AdvaMed further recommends that administrative review of an adverse determination should not preclude resubmission of a modified application at a later point in time. We'd like to make one final point. It is critical that CMS maintain and improve incentives for hospitals and other providers to provide beneficiary access to innovative technologies. Uncertainties in reimbursement for new medical technologies create disincentives for companies, regardless of size, to invest in research and development that lead to medical technology innovation and improvements in the quality and efficiency of healthcare. Small firms may be particularly vulnerable to these uncertainties, because even if they have FDA approval for marketing a product, they are dependent on coverage and payment policies of public and private payers to produce revenues that allow them to continue to innovate. These small companies are particularly critical to U.S. technology leadership, because they are often the source of breakthrough technologies that drive medical technology innovation. Continued medical progress and access of Medicare beneficiaries and other patients to care that can improve their healthcare outcomes literally is at stake, and I thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any additional comments here in the auditorium? Moderator, can you open the lines? Do we have any comments on the telephone lines? Noting that there are no comments, we will proceed to our first presentation for the day. Prior to our presentation, I do want to remind every presenter that we are limiting our presentations to 15 minutes to include questions and answers. Our first presenter this morning will be from Edwards Intuity Elite Valve System. This device is a bovine pericardial aortic bioprosthetic valve, and Dr. Mubashir Mumtaz will be presenting. Dr. Mumtaz?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Michelle, Carol, and CMS for the opportunity to come present here on behalf of Edwards Life Sciences. These are my disclosures, and for a full -- a purpose of full disclosure, my trip here has been sponsored and paid by Edwards Life Sciences. Today, we will talk about aortic stenosis and its treatment, an overview of Edwards Intuity Elite Valve System, which is -- which belongs to a brand-new category of valves called sutureless valves or rapid deployment valves. This includes valves like Edwards Intuity Elite Valve, as well as Percy Valve, which is made by a different company. We will also talk about study findings regarding clinical outcomes and valve performance. So aortic stenosis is a disease of the elderly, and it involves the aortic valve, which is one of the four valves in the heart. It sits right on top of the heart, and the entire blood flow to the body actually has to go through the aortic valve into your circulation. This is a normal-looking aortic valve with three thin leaflets. When the heart beats and the blood is pushed out, the valve opens, and you can see there's a wide-open orifice of this valve that allows the blood to go into your body and into your circulation, whereas with aortic stenosis, as you can see on the right-hand side, these leaflets are calcified and narrowed, and do not allow the blood to flow freely. This puts a lot of back pressure on the heart, and the heart can subsequently get thickened, and it's harder and harder for the blood to flow. Just like bodybuilders, when they pump weights, they build their large biceps and trapezius and other muscles, the heart also builds muscles when it is pushing against an obstruction. Now, it might be good to have a large biceps to show your power and prowess. A large amount of muscle in the heart is not necessarily a good thing, because it causes the heart to get stiffened and actually leads to what's called diastolic heart failure. The symptoms, once they start with aortic stenosis, and commonly, there's a lag period before the symptom starts happening, shortness of breath, chest pain, or faintness. Once these symptoms start, death is fairly imminent in the next few years. So this is a disease that eventually you cannot live with. It is, like I said, a disease of the elderly, and as our population is getting older, we will see that the patients who would require treatment for aortic stenosis, approximately 70% of the -- percent of them will belong to Medicare population. In the current era, even though we have many different TAVR devices for high-risk patients, the current gold standard for aortic valve replacement is still surgery, which could be performed either via a full sternotomy, which is an incision in the middle and cutting the breastbone in half, or through a less invasive procedure, like a mini upper sternotomy or an incision on the side of the chest. Even though we know that minimally invasive surgery, like mini sternotomy and the right chest procedures, are beneficial to the patients, based on several studies, which show that the risk of death goes down if you're doing less invasive procedure, long-term survival is better, risk of blood transfusion is better, your time on the ventilator after the operation improves, and also the risk of irregular heartbeat, atrial fibrillation, also improves after minimally invasive operation. The fact is that the operation -- by doing an operation in a less invasive fashion, it increases the complexity of the procedure and elongates the amount of time needed to fix the valve. Despite that increase in time, the data suggests that there is benefit, and because of that complexity, surgeons are less hesitant to proceed with less invasive operation. An adoption of less invasive techniques is less than 20% out there. Whenever we have to replace an aortic valve, we have to go on heart-lung machine, and that time, while you're on heart-lung machine, is called cardiopulmonary bypass time. Once you're on heart-lung machine, the surgeon has to put a clamp on the big artery above the heart, which is called the aorta, and during that time, which is called the cross-clamp time, there is no blood flow to the heart. That is the time that we give high potassium cardiopedia to stop the heart, and that is the critical time where the heart is most vulnerable to either getting damaged because of lack of blood supply or getting a heart attack, and bad things can happen. So you want to keep those times as short as possible. So despite the benefits in less invasive procedure, what things can lead you to actually adopt less invasive procedures? When you poll the surgeons, one thing we find out, that majority of the time during the operation for aortic valve replacement is spent in replacing the actual valve. So any new device or procedure that will help improve this time and make it easier to perform the procedure will also lead to increased adoption of less invasive procedures. In my own practice, I've done several hundred valve replacements, and I was not performing less invasive procedures prior to using Edwards Intuity Elite Valve. I got involved in this valve very early on in their trial, and once I was comfortable with that valve, I saw the obvious need to move towards less invasive procedures, especially given the ease and the safe -- the decrease in timing in the operating room to deploy the valve, to the point that currently, I would say for the last year or so, all isolated aortic valve replacements at my institution, Pinnacle Health System, which is a mid-sized health system in central Pennsylvania, are done by less invasive operations. So as a surgeon, what do I look for in a new valve that is -- that comes out? Obviously, I want to know what's the clinical safety and efficacy? What's the performance of the valve? What are the hemodynamics? Does the valve open-close valve? It allows the blood to flow smoothly? The ease of use of the valve? The utilization outcomes? How do the patients do in the hospital? And obviously, the overall patient experience? Does it really benefits the patients? Does it really benefits the patients? So Edwards Intuity Elite Valve, which is one of the valves in this category of rapid deployment or sutureless valves, meets that need for surgeons like myself. It has a balloon expandable design. It has an innovative stent below the valve with this fuzzy cuff that seals the valve in place, so you no longer need to put in 15 or 16 sutures, and these are usually pledgetted sutures, and I'll talk about what pledges mean, to put the valve in place. You have to tie each one of these sutures down if you're using a traditional valve. With the Intuity Valve, you only need to use three alignment sutures will help seat the valve in place, and you're done, and that does save time in the operating room. This is the surgical stent I was talking about, and in a way, this is a hybrid valve between the surgical aortic valve and a TAVR valve, and this new innovative design of this valve with the stent at the bottom and the textured seating clot which seals the area around the valve so there are no leaks despite that you haven't used 15 or 16 sutures. These are the pledges that surgeons use commonly. These are made out of felt. These are one pledge, second pledge, and if you are putting in 15 or 16 pledges on a traditional valve, it causes puckering and sometimes narrowing of the area below the valve that we call LVOT, left ventricular outflow tract. It's the area below the valve where all the blood is pushed in once the heart beats, before it is pushed out of the valve itself. So these are the views from underneath the valve. You're looking through the ventricle, and you can see that there's puckering and narrowing, and these pledges are sticking into the left ventricular outflow tract. However, in a case of Intuity Valve, the stent pushes all that tissue on the side and allows for an open, wide, sort of a superhighway for the blood to flow through the valve itself. It also helps keep the shape of the left ventricular outflow tract. If there's some calcium in that area, or there's some tissue that's pushing in and causing irregularity of that area of left ventricular outflow tract, then the stent actually keeps it more circular and, once again, allows for a smooth flow of blood. So, you know, Edwards Intuity Elite Valve could be used in any circumstances. It could be used in sternotomy, in less invasive surgery. In my case, we even modify the less invasive procedures even further, where we did not require any cutting of ribs or cartilage. We call it intercostal surgical aortic valve replacement. We are in the process of putting that data together and see if we can even improve upon further on the less invasive techniques that are out there. But it could be used with any approach, and not only even for isolated valves, if you have combined procedure, like somebody needs three bypasses and a heart valve replaced, then we know that it takes actually longer in those patients. And by able to reducing the amount of time spent in the operating room, it will help improving their outcomes because we know from other trials and data that increased procedure, increased cardiopulmonary bypass time, cross-clamp time can lead to increased risk of stroke, renal complications, and also increased need for blood transfusions. As a surgeon, I want to know if I'm going to use a new device, what's the clinical evidence behind that device? And this slide gives you a snapshot of the data and the trials that have been performed for Edwards Intuity Elite Valve. Some of these trials were performed in Europe, and the TRANSFORM trial was our seminal U.S. trial performed right here. In the CADENCE trial, which was a European trial, we saw that there was 24% improvement in the cross-clamp time, and that cross-clamp time directly translates into the actual time you are spending in replacing the valve. The heart is stopped. It's also most vulnerable at that time because there's no blood flow into the heart, and by reducing this time by 24%, you actually end up helping the patient recover better and hopefully improve outcomes subsequently. We've talked about that longer procedure times, especially in people with heart functions that are not as good, they're complex procedures, and elderly patients, they are at more risk of having a poor outcome because of a longer procedure. Another trial, which was called the TRITON trial, I will talk briefly about that. It looked over the three-year period analyzing the performance of Edwards Intuity Valve, where it showed that the mean gradient stayed stable. Gradients are pressure difference across the valve, showing that there was no further narrowing of the valve once the valve was put in place over the three-year period. Left ventricular mass, I talked about when the heart is beating against a blockage, it builds up this muscle. So if you replace the valve, does the muscle go back down to normal? So the answer is yes, it does do that, and the TRITON trial showed us that. It helps keep the effective orifice area stable and freedom from major perivascular leak, because we worry about, we're not putting in 15, 16 sutures, does that increase the amount of leakage around the valve? And the answer to that is no. The chance of leakage around the valve in this trial was less than 2%. It was very low. Similarly, the left ventricular mass regression, if this suggests normal heart, this is a thick heart because of aortic stenosis, you're pushing constantly against a resistance, so the heart muscle thickens up. And by replacing the valve with Edwards Intuity Valve, we showed over the three-year period that the left ventricular mass was significantly lower at three years versus at the time of discharge after the operation. Size for size, if you're using traditional valve versus Edwards Intuity Valve, we know that the valve allows more blood flow through itself for the same size of valve, and part of the reason could be because of the stent at the bottom keeping that area below the valve wide open. So TRANSFORM trial, which was a U.S. trial, was a single-arm trial. We did not compare it to any traditional valve. So after the trial was finished, we wanted to look at and compare this data to a real-world data, and we looked at Society of Thoracic Surgeons data, which is a national database. 90% of the programs and surgeons actually contribute to this data across the country. So looking at this data and comparing it to our TRANSFORM U.S. trial data, we saw that, once again, there was significant improvement in cross-clamp time, in cardiopulmonary bypass time, both in sternotomy cases, which is full, open operation, versus less minimally invasive cases. And actually, in this trial, approximately 49% of the patients were done through a less-invasive approach, again, proving the point that this valve facilitated less invasive procedure. And like I said, in our scenario, in my scenario, we were not doing less invasive aortic valve treatment before. So once I was comfortable and I learned the use of this valve, I was able to transfer into a less invasive approach, to the extent that we even modified the less invasive approach further to reduce the need of cutting any major muscles, to only utilize the space in between the ribs, and not having to cut a bone or a cartilage to replace the valve. So in our practice, that was a significant improvement that our patients actually benefited Obviously, as a surgeon, I want to know if this valve helped my patients. So one of the things we look for is New York Heart Association class, which you can also, in loose terms, say is quality of life afterwards, though it does not take into account all quality of life measures. But it says that your symptoms have improved after the operation. If you were able to walk from here till the end of the room and you were getting short of breath prior to the operation, after the operation, you saw an improvement. So we actually saw in 73% of the cases, there was improvement in New York Heart Association class. That means that symptomatically, they improved afterwards. Also, it has to be noted that, as far as the safety outcomes are concerned for Intuity Valve in this trial, the all-cause mortality was less than 1%. Valve-specific mortality was very low at 0.5%. The need for a re-operation after this valve, if in case this valve didn't work right or some, was, again, very low at 0.2%. So this satisfied, you know, our concerns or my concerns for safety, efficacy, and performance of the valve. Once again, since this was a single-arm trial, we compared this to published cohorts of patients out there, and, once again, we were able to see that the procedure times and cross-clamp times were reduced, re-operation and 30-day mortality was reduced as compared to published cohorts out there, and the length of stay, both in the hospital and the ICU of these patients, was reduced. Independent experts have done meta-analyses and looked at rapid deployment valves as a category, which includes both Percival and Intuity Valve, and compared it to traditional valves, and again, had the same findings, that the amount of time spent in the operating room improved, and the outcomes were much better with the rapid deployment valves. So in our mind, Edwards Intuity Elite Valve System, and this category of valves for that matter, meets the NTAP criteria, meets, the reason why, because it meets the newness criteria, meets the cost criteria, and meets substantial clinical improvement criteria. Thank you very much, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if they're in.
Moderator, will you open the line for questions as well, please? Do we have any questions on the line?
If you have any questions at this time, all lines are now unmuted.
Noting that we have no further questions, I'd like to thank Dr. Mumtaz for his presentation.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Our next presenter will be Dr. Brian Duncan from Percival Sutureless Heart Valves, another bioprosthetic aortic valve.
Well, good morning. Thank you, Michelle, and certainly like to thank CMS and all the organizers for the new technology add-on town hall meeting. I'm Dr. Brian Duncan. I'm the Vice President Medical Affairs for Cardiac Surgery at Levanova. In addition to my role at Levanova, I'm also a formerly practicing cardiac surgeon, and I believe that sutureless rapid deployment valves are an important new addition to the management of structural heart disease, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak at this town hall in support of these technologies. I'll be discussing Percival, which is Levanova's valve in this category of sutureless rapid deployment valves. Percival received FDA approval in January of 2016 and meets the NTAP criteria of newness and cost, as described by Dr. Mumtaz. Very importantly, the criterion of substantial clinical improvement is, I think, well addressed by these technologies, and that, and those topics related to clinical improvement will be the focus of my comments. I'm going to keep my comments, I think, by design, very brief. You've heard a lot of these issues from Dr. Mumtaz, and a lot of what I'll say is a reiteration and support of his comments as well. So over the past 40 years, bioprosthetic heart valves have had a major impact in the management of patients with structural heart disease, as you've heard from Dr. Mumtaz. But I have to say that while major improvements have been made in these valves during this time, these improvements have been relatively incremental. So simply put, sutureless rapid deployment valves are innovative new devices that embody transformative technologic features that improve patient care. The ability to implant these valves without the need for sutures and in a rapid deployment manner substantially simplifies and shortens the surgical procedure, as Dr. Mumtaz has indicated. In the case of Percival, other design elements also help ensure optimal hemodynamic performance of the valve. For Percival, the promise of these design innovations have been substantiated by more than 150 peer-reviewed articles in the medical literature that document, number one, shortened cross-clamp times. That's the most critical period during cardiac surgical procedures, when the heart is stopped to allow access to its internal structures, again, as described by Dr. Mumtaz. Number two, shortened cardiopulmonary bypass times, also you heard about this morning, the overall amount of time when the circulation is supported by the heart-lung machine, another critical period during open-heart procedures. And third, shortened overall procedure times. So the reduction in these procedure times for open-heart surgery directly lead to benefits for the recovery of patients beyond the operating room, and the literature demonstrates this as well, with documented reductions in duration of post-operative ventilatory support, reduced intensive care unit stays, reduced overall hospital stays, and reduced need for blood transfusion and various complications such as certain heart rhythm abnormalities and fluid collections in the chest, commonly seen after open-heart surgery. So these all create the potential for important improvements in patient care and outcomes following open-heart surgical procedures. Finally, in the case of Percival, and you heard about this from Dr. Mumtaz as well, for Percival, the valve has collapsed on a dedicated holder, which in combination with its sutureless design greatly facilitates valve implantation through the smallest incisions used in these minimally invasive cardiac surgical procedures that Dr. Mumtaz described, simplifying this state-of-the-art approach to cardiac surgical patients. Minimally invasive procedures decrease the size of the surgical incision and post-operative pain, features that are certainly highly desirable for patients who require cardiac surgery, and Percival, these sutureless rapid deployment valves facilitate this approach, this minimally invasive cardiac surgical approach. So in summary, sutureless rapid deployment heart valves, such as Percival, are an important technologic advance in the field of cardiac surgery that greatly simplifies these complex procedures and significantly improve patient care, with the potential to generate greater patient satisfaction, quality of life, and acceptance of cardiac surgical procedures. We maintain the shared belief, along with Edwards, that you heard from this morning, that sutureless rapid deployment valves have transformed the way valves are traditionally implanted, and have demonstrated substantial clinical improvement over existing surgical aortic valves. Again, I'd certainly like to thank CMS for the opportunity to present today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Moderator, may you open the line for questions?
At this time, all lines are now open. You may ask questions over the phone lines.
Okay, we note that we have no further questions. We'd like to thank Dr. Duncan for his presentation.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll take a brief break and reconvene at 10 o'clock. Thank you. Thank you.
1998, and that truly has changed the game. We've always used this so-called pyramid system, the way we manage inflammatory bowel disease in general and Crohn's disease in particular. So we start slow and we build up. And this has been around for many, many years. The biologics, as I mentioned, when they came on the scene in 1998, really changed the landscape. However, they're not perfect. We're always looking for new drugs. They don't necessarily keep people in remission, and there are significant problems with toxicity. This leads us to ustokinumab. So in early trials, which I'm going to share with you, this drug was noted to be efficacious in Crohn's disease. This is a drug that's been on the market since 2009 for psoriasis. So it's not a new drug, but it's clearly a new indication and a very different formulation. This was the paper published in 2008. And as Michelle mentioned in the introduction, the... Am I good? Am I not seeing here what I'm seeing there? Is that why I saw all these confused looks on people's faces? I had the heart valve guy stuff up here. So interleukin-12 and interleukin-23 are regulatory cytokines, and they both have in common a subunit called P40. So by interfering with P40, you block both IL-12 and IL-23. One of the questions that's been raised, since psoriasis and psoriatic arthritis are treated with subQ formulation, why is it that we are using IV induction in Crohn's disease? Well, that's shown very clearly with some data that I will share with you from the study that I just showed you. In the interest of time, I'm going to look only at population two. And for another reason, population two consists of individuals who either failed primary therapy with a TNF inhibitor, infliximab, or they were what we call secondary non-responders, meaning they got a response or a remission, and then they lost it despite maximizing therapy. This is one of the key problems with biologic drugs. It's not just inducing remission, which is obviously important. You can't maintain a remission unless you induce it. But one of the pitfalls of the biologics is this falloff, if you will. So if we start 100 patients on a biologic drug today, it's likely that fewer than half of those are going to be on that drug at the end of the year and doing well. This shows you very clearly why IV induction beats subQ induction. This program began over a decade ago, and a lot of things were done to get to this point. So you see in the blue bars, the results of the IV formulation versus the gray bars with the results of the subQ formulation. So this is sort of an aha moment for the company in trying to figure out what should be done. And it was clear that at least for Crohn's disease, we needed to do things a little This shows remission, a small number of patients. Once again, that same trend where IV trumps subQ. So another trial was done, which I don't have time to share with you, but it looked at different doses of the IV formulation. And then we finally did this trial that was published in the New England Journal just a few months ago. And the data that I will show you is what led to this drug being approved by the FDA for treatment of moderate to severe Crohn's disease. There were two induction studies. And what I want to share with you is that for gastroenterologists, the hardest patients to treat are the ones who have already failed biologic, specifically TNF inhibitors. TNF inhibitors came on the market in 1998, and as I mentioned a couple of times, they really changed the way we manage IBD in general. So the first population were patients who had failed a TNF. The second population are patients who had failed what we call conventional therapy, corticosteroids and immunomodulators. Notice the doses that were given. So once again, IV. These patients were given either 130 milligrams, which is a single vial of ustokinumab, or they were given approximately, and you see the approximate sign, 6 milligrams per kilogram. So this was based on weight. If patients were under 55 kilograms, they got two vials; 55 to 85, they got three vials; over 85, they got four. So this is a dramatically different amount of drug than we use for psoriasis. We know that even though inflammatory bowel disease is an immune-mediated disease, as is rheumatoid arthritis, as is psoriasis, and so on down the line, they're different. Even though they fall into the same rubric of immune-mediated, they need different levels of suppression to get a positive response. So patients were treated with a single IV dose, and then they were assessed for a response at week six. The primary endpoint was a clinical response as deemed by the CDAI, which is an eight-component measurement of how we measure activity of Crohn's disease in clinical trials. And if you responded, you were then able to roll into a maintenance study. So we have Unity 1, Unity 2, and then the responders could roll into immunity. Now, if you look at the dose of drugs and immunity, it's a little bit more like what we're used to with psoriasis. Psoriasis patients, it's a weight-based format, but the most they get is 90 milligrams, which is what this maintenance group got in Crohn's, and they were treated either every eight weeks or every 12 weeks. This is a busy slide for which I apologize, but it's taken directly from the publication, which led to FDA approval. And what you can see in the gold-colored bars are the results of the 130 dose, and in the blue, the 6 milligrams per kilogram dose. And you can see in a lot of instances, they're really pretty close, but when you get out a little further to week eight especially, you see that there is a separation. So this is just the rates of clinical response, and then this is the rates of clinical remission. So if you look at the right-hand side of the slide, you can see that even though there was statistical significance with the 130, there was a clear-cut benefit or incremental benefit of the higher dose. So the FDA-approved induction dose is the approximately 6 milligrams per kilogram dose. As I mentioned, those patients who responded then rolled over into the maintenance study, where they got 90 milligrams subQ every eight weeks or every 12 weeks. So again, the whole idea of this is IV induction. IV works better. Higher drug levels. Hit it hard. Then you marry that with the convenience of subQ. Patients want convenience, and subQ works very well for maintenance of disease. This shows you, again with different colored bars, the gold bar being the every 12 weeks, the blue bar being the every eight weeks. And you can see that there is a difference between eight and 12 with the secondary and primary endpoints you see on the bottom of the slide. And that's why the 90-milligram every eight subcutaneously is the FDA-approved format. So IV induction, subQ maintenance. Whenever we talk about drugs, efficacy comes first, but it's followed closely behind by safety. One of the problems we have with the biologics is although they are effective, they don't necessarily maintain response, and there are adverse events that we have to deal with. So this shows you, and every time I look at a safety slide, I know that there's too much information. But if you just focus on the top line and you look at any adverse event, you can see that it's really comparable when you look at placebo versus Stellara. You see the more common adverse events on the bottom of the slide. And then if you look at serious adverse events, and we as physicians focus on serious infections, any serious adverse event. And if you look at the red box, you can see that serious infections on the top and serious adverse events. Serious adverse events being things like hospitalization, surgery, life-threatening occurrences and so forth. You can see that it compares very favorably to placebo. So this drug has demonstrated efficacy and safety. If we look at the maintenance, because a lot of people say about safety, well, if you only have one dose and you're measuring safety over a six or eight-week period, we really need to know what happens over time. So this is one year of exposure to this drug. You can see on the top, any adverse event, pretty much the same in all three groups. If you look at the serious adverse events, you can see actually that serious adverse events occurred more commonly in the placebo group than in the other two groups. So this is a drug with a safety profile, at least for the subQ formulation, that goes back to 2009 when it was first approved. And the question that everybody has had, well, when you're giving IV, so it's really new. It's really different. Are you going to get the same kind of safety profile? And in fact, that was the case. So what you see for the safety profile of this drug, when it was, had the addition of Crohn's disease added to psoriatic arthritis and psoriasis, it really didn't change at all. So the authors of this paper concluded that it works. IV induction induces response and remission, and maintenance subQ keeps people there. So fairly obvious conclusions, I would think. I want to close with just a couple of things. We know that the elderly is a huge focus, obviously, when we think about, and that was shown very nicely when we were talking about aortic valves, the percentage of patients who fall into that category. So, and I might add that elderly, I'm getting more and more offended by the term elderly as I, I think I've passed elderly. But the elderly patients represent an increasing proportion of the IBD population. About 10 to 15% of IBD cases are diagnosed in patients greater than 60, and they make up 10 to 30% of the IBD population. This has assumed much greater importance over the last few years. We never saw specific articles about caring for the elderly with IBD, but now it's really a main focus. Individuals over 65, and this comes to no surprise to this audience, represents the fastest growing age group, and is expected to increase by about a third over the next decade. IBD in the elderly can be difficult to diagnose. It's confused with other diseases, like diverticulosis or ischemic bowel disease. Why is that important? We have learned from our study of the biologics that the earlier in the course of the disease that you treat, the greater the likelihood of a response. So you get the picture. If you have a patient that's over 60, and they wait a year and a half with these symptoms that somebody says, "Well, it's your diverticulosis," or whatever, they're late in getting the diagnosis made, late to therapy, and they don't do as well. The indications for the TNF inhibitors, which has the lion's share of the biologic business, there are a couple of others that are out there. What we've noticed with these drugs, the indications are the same as they are in younger people, but they don't work quite as well. And the toxicity profile is greater. There are more adverse events in the elderly. But if you look at the trials, and unfortunately, we don't have that many elderly people in our trials. It's a relative handful. But there didn't appear to be any difference in the adverse event profile or the efficacy. Furthermore, with our psoriasis data, we've shown the same thing. So in conclusion, a brief summary slide, there's certainly robust evidence that ustokinumab is effective. What makes it different? Why are we talking about it here today? It treats the most difficult population of Crohn's patients that we have. Those who have failed one, and in fact, in our Unity 1 trial, half those patients had failed more than one TNF inhibitor. This is a very tough population. This is giving an IV drug followed by subQ maintenance. It also treats people who had failed conventional therapy. So it's the whole breadth of patients with Crohn's disease. The safety profile is very good. We have a post-marketing commitment for safety that began in 2007, so before it was even marketed. We have over 12,000 patients in. We have over 4,000 patients who've been exposed to Stellara. We just recently looked at the incidence of malignancy and the incidence of serious infections comparing Stellara to patients who received TNF inhibitors. Stellara was much significantly safer than the TNF inhibitors. So that safety piece, I think, is really critical. And then finally, the incidence of Crohn's in the elderly is increasing. I think having this drug available for elderly population really makes a difference. No black box warning, efficacy that appears to be just as good as in youthful patients, and there has been no difference shown in our trials. So I would like to thank you for your time. I think this is an important discussion, and I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you may have. Thank you.
Moderator, would you open the lines for the questions, please?
At this time, all lines are now open. You may ask questions.
Hello, this is Dr. Barca. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I would just like to, I'm from CMS. I'm a medical officer that works in the Division of Acute Care. And I have a question about where you see Stellara's role within the pyramid schema that you described in terms of, do you think that Stellara replaces a medication or is an adjunct to the treatment?
I think that's a great question that is being hotly debated. And we'd go, well, we could take this discussion for an hour. Where I think it fits is going to be judged by early use and then long-term use. Right now, what we see in the world, in real-world kind of evidence, is people are using it in patients who have failed everything. So we will typically see patients who failed two TNF inhibitors, for example, and they're kind of at their wits' end. They may have already failed another drug called vedilizumab or Entivio. But I think what we also are hearing, and more and more, this drug only got released in September, we're hearing more and more use of this drug as first-line biologic therapy. So in the bio-naive. And you know, at the end of the day, I think it comes right down to accessibility. Accessibility, cost. I think clearly the data for this drug for Crohn's disease is comparable to data with TNFs, but the safety profile is clearly superior. So I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Okay. We'd like to thank Dr. Pop for his presentation.
I turned it off.
Thank you. Okay. Our next presenters will be Claudia Amidon and Rachel Atkinson for Zemplava, another drug therapy. This drug therapy is used for patients with Clostridium difficile infection. Thank you.
I thank you for letting me be here in front of you and for the opportunity to highlight the significant clinical improvement from Zemplava in order to reduce recurrence of patients at high risk per CDI, identified as the first FDA approval for recurrence of C. difficile infection. Before I get started, I kind of want to just stop and ask, how many of you may have known someone who's had a C. difficile infection, or if you've experienced? And I just want to highlight that this drug is for the patient. Although I'm talking about very clinical and scientific endpoints, I'm not talking about the emotional distress or the quality of life associated with C. difficile. So just wanting to highlight and bringing it back that the drug is for the patient. I know some of you are familiar with our application, but I'd like to do a brief summary to bring everyone up to the same level, so you can understand the mechanism of action. So infection with C. difficile begins with the host exposure to C. difficile spores. So C. difficile, Clostridium difficile, is sometimes abbreviated as C. difficile or C. diff. Upon ingestion and germination of the C. difficile spores and exposure to internal host factors, produces a toxin-expressing vegetative state. With changes in the diversity of the microbiome and overgrowth of C. difficile, causes a C. difficile infection, also called a CDI, which produces C. difficile-associated diarrhea, CDAD. The primary virulent factors of C. difficile are thought to be the toxins produced, with toxin B being responsible for the severe intestinal damage and also activation of the inflammatory and of the immune response. The signs and symptoms of C. difficile range from mild to severe and complicated, in which patients over the age of 65 are overly presenting with severe and complicated. The CDC has designated C. difficile as an urgent threat, a category that requires more monitoring and higher consequence with the significant risk, including clinical impact, economic impact, increase in incident, and the lack of effective treatments. The CDC has identified three different urgent threats as being the most severe of their threat level. And of the three different threats, C. difficile is the only threat that disproportionately affects people older than the age of 65. As you can see here, and as I have mentioned earlier, both the primary occurrence and recurrence is increasing with incident, both with the aging population, and is overly identified in patients who are 65 years of older, in which hospitalized patients for CDI are 92% 65 years of older, and of deaths for C. difficile, you have 93% are 65 years of age or older. After initial episode, a patient may have 25% chance of having a second episode, with this likelihood increasing with each additional episode. Zemplava is a human monoclonal antibody that binds to the Clostridium difficile toxin B, indicated to reduce recurrence of Clostridium difficile in patients 18 years of age or older who are receiving antibacterial drug treatment of CDI and are at high risk for CDI recurrence. Zemplava is not indicated for the treatment of CDI. It is indicated to reduce recurrence in CDI in patients who are at high risk. Zemplava is not an antibacterial drug, and therefore has no effects on the diversity of the microbiome. And Zemplava should only be used in conjunction with antibacterial drug treatment. In patients with a history of congestive heart failure, Zemplava should be reserved for the use when the benefits outweigh the risk. This is highlighted above, and with patients had a severe adverse reaction of heart failure in the Zemplava group and in having higher mortality in the Zemplava group if they had a previous history of congestive heart failure. Zemplava is a human monoclonal antibody that binds to the C. difficile toxin B and neutralizes its effects. Zemplava comes in a 50-mill vial with 1,000 milligrams of bezlotoximab and the adjusted pH of 6. The recommended dose of Zemplava is a single 10-milligram per kilogram dose infused over 60 minutes. With the safety and efficacy of repeat administration of Zemplava in patients with CDI has not been studied. Infusion of Zemplava must be used with an inline or an add-on filter, and can also be infused either central line or peripheral catheter, and must not be co-administered with other drugs simultaneously through the same infusion line. There were two Phase III studies, Trial 1 and 2, in which randomization was stratified by standard of care with metronidazole, vancomycin, and fedaxomycin, and hospitalization status. Enrolled patients were 18 years of age or older and had a confirmed diagnosis of CDI, which was identified as three or more loose bowel movements within 24 hours, and a positive stool toxin test for C. difficile collected no more than seven days before the start of therapy. Patients were excluded if there was surgery planned or had uncontrolled chronic diarrheal In the study, patients received 10 to 14 days of standard of care and a single dose of Zemplava or placebo. The median day of Zemplava was on day three, although this ranged from the day before standard of care to day 14 of standard of care. Here is the table that demonstrates the efficacy results of the study. The primary endpoint and the indication of Zemplava was recurrence. And you can see in both Trial 1 and Trial 2, there was significant clinical improvement with the reduction of CDI recurrence. The next endpoint, which is the secondary endpoint, is sustained clinical response. Sustained clinical response includes both clinical failure and recurrence. And clinical failure was defined as patients who received longer than 14 days of standard of care, patients who had diarrhea on two days after stopping standard of care, and patients who had non-complete stool records. So going back to the patients who were in clinical failure, the ones who did not achieve clinical care, received an average of four additional days of standard of care, and reanalysis of that time point at three weeks showed that there was no difference between the treatment arms. In conclusion, Zemplava showed a significant clinical improvement in patients at high risk for CDI recurrence. This included patients aged 65 years or older, a history of CDI in the past six months, immunocompromised state, severe CDI at presentation, or ribotype 027, and these were consistent with the table that I just showed. For the first four weeks, for the severe adverse, sorry, the common adverse reaction, they were nausea, pyrexia, and headache. Importantly, from the overall Zemplava population, with the median age of 65 years, ranging from 18 to 100, 50% were older, 65 or older, 56% were female, and 83% were white. Serious adverse events occurring within 12 weeks were similar between Zemplava and placebo at 29 and 33%, and heart failure was reported in 2.3% of Zemplava, 1% of placebo. One patient discontinued due to VTAC during infusion, and mortality rates were similar at 7.1 and 7.6%. Overall, there were similar infusion-related reactions with 10% of Zemplava, 8% of placebo, and these reactions resolved within 24 hours following onset. Immunogenicity tests are complicated, but in our study of the 710 evaluable patients, none of the patients tested positive for treatment emergent anti-bezlotoximab antibodies. In summary, Zemplava has a unique mechanism of action, being the first FDA-approved monoclonal antibody that specifically binds and neutralizes C. difficile toxin B. And I hope I've highlighted the significant clinical improvement provided by Zemplava in order to reduce the recurrence of CDI in adult patients at high risk for CDI recurrence. I thank you for your time, and now yield my time for questions.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for coming. My name is Karen Nakana. I'm one of the medical officers working with Michelle and Mike on the Division of Acute Care. A few quick questions on your latest New England Journal of Medicine article.
Yeah.
And I know you don't have this at your ready, but in figure, in Table 1, and this was also in your supplemental tables, there was a section on which you indicated that other antibiotics were used during the standard of care as well as use after the standard of care. And we were a little confused based on your methods description. We could not discern if these were antibiotics that were allowed as IV treatment for the C. diff?
No, these are antibiotics used for treat different infections. So these aren't, the only IV antibiotic that was allowed was IV metronidazole.
Right. Okay, great. So in your slides with your adverse events, you mentioned there was an interaction, I think you said, between the piper sin?
Between what? I'm sorry?
The piper sin?
No.
So in one of your slides, you kind of went through very quickly towards the end with the adverse effects. So I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
This, this one? Infusion-related or 12 weeks or four weeks?
I believe it was the infusion-related. Okay. I'll take a look at your slides, because I don't want to hold up time.
Okay.
The other question I had, and this is a very minor question, but again, since you're here, we thought we should ask.
Yeah.
In your supplemental section in the New England Journal of Medicine, you are very kind, and you gave us a statistical analysis methods, and you also drew a figure there.
Uh-huh.
It is very difficult to discern what your notes are in your figure. You have the MIT population, and then you had it drawn out where clinical cure was yes, no, and then you had other... no, and then you had other notation such as NR, NC, et cetera. If it would be possible to get Merck to send us an explanation of that, that would be great. Thanks.
Yes, fantastic.
Moderator, will you open the line for questions as well, please?
So this is Dr. Barcliffe and just to follow up on Karen's question, so the antibiotics that were received during the study, those were antibiotics that were used to treat other infections or C. diff. And I know you just answered this question, but I wanted to make sure I understood your answer.
All patients had received 10 to 14 days of standard of care according to protocol. Some patients may have also been on concomitant antibiotics for a previous infection. The patients who did not, who had clinical failure at two weeks, went on to receive four more days of standard of care, the median four more days of standard of care. Did that clarify it?
Yes, it does. I guess I'm just curious, how do you know the difference in your results between a recurrent and a persistent infection, a persistent previous infection?
Specifically, it's very hard to identify that and there's lots of debate about if, if you had the same ribotype twice, was it a recurrent infection or were you just re-exposed to the same source that you got it to begin with? But Merck answered, attempted to answer that question by ribotyping when samples were available. And the majority of the samples did have the same ribotype, but there was a population that were a different ribotype.
So the majority of samples shows it was persistent infection and then there was a small number that had new infections. Is that what you're saying?
No, you can't define it as being a persistent infection with ribotype. Someone may have been exposed to the same ribotype twice.
Gotcha.
But according to ribotype, there was more of the first ribotype from the primary infection to the second that were the same compared to some that were different.
Mm-hmm. So, and I realize that this is not a treatment for C. diff infection, but it rather neutralizes the toxin B. So would you call this like a supportive, I mean, how do you jump from neutralizing toxin B and therefore the symptoms of C. diff to it actually decreases recurrence?
So by neutralizing toxin B, you are preventing further damage of the intestinal tract. You are treating the C. difficile infection with the standard of care. With the antitoxin B antibodies still remaining, it gives your body and your microbiome time to fully repair and hopefully prevent recurrence, which is what our study showed. There was a significant clinical improvement.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions? Okay, noting that there are none, we'd like to thank our presenters. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Thank you. Okay. Our next presentation will be for the Gamma Tile. Gamma Tile is a customized permanent cesium 131 brain implant used with brachytherapy sources in a collagen matrix. And our presenter this morning is Dr. David Brockman.
Your clip is going to be shown from inside, so when you get to this slide, you won't have to click on it, then click on it because it won't work from here, so they'll click for you.
So they'll click for me.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Good morning and thank you for having me. My name is David Brockman and I am honored to be here and I'm on behalf of Gamma Tile and ISARAY and thank, thank the NTAP team for the opportunity to be here today. I'm going to sort out pointers from forward and back and then I think I'll be ready to go. I have a large amount of information to cover today and I apologize if my talk is a little bit rushed. However, I wanted to be sure to express the severity, the unmet need that we're facing here. I am a clinical radiation oncologist. I have credentials on what was the slide, pardon me. I've done this for 32 years. I treat only brain tumors and patients with aggressive recurrent brain tumors often looked well initially, however, their, their life expectancy and quality of life is very, very rapidly diminished without effective treatment. And currently effective treatments for recurrent brain tumors are fraught with side effects and not effective for long, it turns out. That being said, we're very pleased to describe to you a new treatment option that is demonstrating tremendous potential to improve the quality of life and the clinical, meaningful clinical outcomes for our patients. As a quick review, I'm going to be discussing three things today as soon as I can find out what forward means. As a quick review, the challenges associated with the current brain tumor treatments will be one of our topics. The Gamma Tile, a device we feel is a useful solution to several of these challenges, and the clinical data behind our statements. Brain tumor treatment often starts with surgery, but even the most careful surgery can leave some malignant cells behind. And after surgery, additional treatment is typically recommended with the goal to decrease the risk of cancer returning, and this is termed an adjuvant therapy. It turns out that the most common brain tumors in adults, meningiomas, gliomas, and brain metastases are also the most common recurrent brain tumors. The numbers shown here are derived from American Cancer Society statistics on a yearly basis for adults in the U.S. And given the age-related occurrence, half or more would be expected to occur in the Medicare-eligible population. This is a big problem. As mentioned before, the treatments given in addition to the primary treatment are referred to as adjuvant, and these are commonly recommended in both initial and recurrent aggressive brain tumor treatment. And this application specifically involves an adjuvant treatment for recurrent brain tumors. In general cancer care, adjuvant treatments can take the form of radiation or chemotherapy or occasionally biologic treatments. However, it turns out in brain tumors, chemotherapy and immunotherapy are not sufficiently useful as they have biologically restricted access to the brain, sometimes referred to as the blood-brain barrier and are actually rarely used currently. The blood-brain barrier does not prohibit the entry of radiation and radiation treatment is typically given from the outside inward, something termed external radiation, but can also be placed internally at the time of surgery, and this is referred to as internal or brachytherapy radiation. On the left is an example of an external radiation delivery device. In this case, it's a proton machine under construction. There is, if I find my pointer, an additional pointer, a human standing inside of this thing. On the right are six individual radiation sources in titanium capsules, commonly referred to as seeds, and the dime is just shown for scale. Fundamentally, all radiation treatments work by the same mechanism. DNA damage occurs as a result of radiation exposure and cellular replication is halted. It turns out that external radiation treatment often involves treatment from the outside, always involves treatment traveling from the outside of the body inward, passing through the recent surgical wound. And because of this, because of this, I apologize, treatment is often needed to be delayed for several weeks to allow for surgical tissue healing. The radiation beams can expose the normal tissues they transfer to unnecessary radiation and external radiation treatment centers are often geographically poorly located from a patient's home, leading to a poor access to care. During the delay necessary for wound healing between the start of surgery and external radiation, tumor cells left behind can start to grow. This is one example of that and it's unfortunately not at all a rare event. With internal radiation, treatment is started at the time of surgery and it's long been suggested as a remedy for the problem of early tumory growth. In fact, just a few miles from here, as I'm heading, just a few miles from here, Johns Hopkins was a pioneer in the 30s but abandoned it for same reasons. Many people don't do it today and we're going to discuss those shortly. However, it's currently rarely ever done. Available devices were designed primarily for use in, use in the treatment of prostate cancer and frequently exhibit high toxicity when used in the brain. As currently practiced, seeds are inserted into the brain or laid on the brain and glued in place. And this is an illustration from a recent paper on the current technique. The silver dots you see are seeds on end view implanted directly for, into the brain. And I'd like you to look for a moment at those seed dots. Some are spaced very close together, some are farther apart, and this is an example of non-uniformity. Uneven spacing results in too much radiation where they're bunched together and not enough radiation where they're spread apart. The increased radiation dose resulting from too close a spacing is called a hotspot and those areas that receive too little radiation from seeds being too far apart are cold spots and hot spots can result in brain injury and cold spots can lead to tumor recurrence. The spacing problem occurs in part because of the design of the seeds. They were actually designed, as we stated, to go through a needle into a prostate gland. They're very small, cylindrical, and about the size of a broken mechanical pencil lead. It takes approximately 30 minutes to complete the brain implanters currently used and therefore it's one reason why it's remained an artisan approach to this date. There's a second major reason internal brain radiation is rarely used and even if the seeds could be perfectly spaced, the currently available data, the currently available devices, pardon, are still in direct contact with brain tissue and that turns out to be a bad idea. It turns out that the charcoal grays, light bulbs, and seed implants all are governed by the same law of physics, and that is that the energy given off is very, very intense close to the source of radiation. And this falls off rapidly as you move away from the emission, and this is termed the inverse square law. The radiation energy deposited in direct contact with tissue is far more intense than is needed for tumor kill and can result in severe injury. At the same time, the rapid change in radiation moving away from the sources can result in not enough radiation in other areas, further contributing to the problem of cold spots and tumor recurrence. Basically, to be safe and effective, we need the radiation treatments to be exactly like the baby bear in the Goldilocks story wanted of porridge, not too hot, not too cold, but just right. Recapping the core problems, aggressive brain tumors require adjuvant therapy after surgery for an improved outcome and the existing adjuvant therapies are inadequate and often toxic for the reasons we have discussed. The Gamma Tile is a solution for many of these problems. The Gamma Tile is fundamentally different from the current brachytherapy treatments. It contains seeds in an implanted bio-compatible device and it delivers targeted radiation treatment with precise and accurate spacing between the seeds and off of the brain tissue. The Gamma Tile can overcome many of the current problems. It is implanted at the time of surgery and eliminates the delay associated with external radiation treatments. Treatment is delivered from the inside, lessening the toxicity. There is increased access to care and increased compliance as radiation is available at the same location as the surgery and no return visits are needed as with external radiation. The Gamma Tile is on this slide. The Gamma Tile has a flexible collagen square embedded with brachy, embedded with brachytherapy seeds. The upper-left corner is a trans-illuminated view. It's about the size of a quarter, if quarters were square. The tiles themselves are four millimeters thick and the seeds are offset from the brain. As shown on the center tile, the waffly side goes toward brain. The tiles function simultaneously as a multi-seed carrier and as a three-dimensional spacer. And Gamma Tile carrier placement takes an average of six minutes, significantly lessening both staff exposure in the operating room and anesthesia time compared to the current brachytherapy treatments. This is a picture of a Gamma Tile under construction. We'll kind of skip through this one. It's not all that exciting and it's actually something you'd never see because it really does take place in a shielded stainless steel box. The Gamma Tile treatment is conceptually straightforward, but several challenges remain. It's currently a prototype device with each tile made onsite in the operating room for each case, and this requires a radiation oncologist over 90 minutes of time per case. Imagine a time not too long ago when the idea of a hip or knee replacement was still a radical concept, but a good concept. Each one had to be crafted by hand in the operating room. That is where we are today with the production of Gamma Tiles. A centralized manufacturing process will achieve the precision, the accuracy, and the consistency vital for successful treatment that can be accessed wherever it's needed. To give you a better idea of how the treatment is done, let's go through a case. This is a 78-year-old male. For those in the audience who remember our prior speakers, this is a retired cardiac transplant surgeon. And he had had a glioma which retired, which occurred twice, and it's the whitish mass seen on the preoperative MRI. This is the same patient at surgery. Immediately following a tumor removal, the tiles are placed around the cavity in contact with the operative bed. The purplish material you can see protruding from the tiles is surgical suture. The seeds are embedded in there. Those are not the seeds themselves. And this is a 30-second video on how the tiles are placed. I'm understanding that someone will queue that up. The actual tile placement of this gentleman took 2 minutes and 17 seconds. This is the surgeon preparing the operative wound with a measurement. He's measuring the bed itself. It has a three-dimensionality to it, so there's a depth. A tile is being placed at the bottom. You can see that the strands of seeds are very close to one side if we get a chance. It's literally lining the cavity with the, with the radiation tiles. The tiles themselves are fairly robust. And that's done. If we can go back to the slides. Thank you very much. So this is the post-operative scans and the seeds are shown at the white arrows. And after surgery, a dose evaluation plan is done on a standard commercial software system. This is used for other brain radiation treatments. This is the same slide from the last patient, same resection. And this slide compares to the amount of brain, skull, and scalp exposed to radiation with external radiation treatments or with the Gamma Tile treatments. The thin white inner circle is actually the area needing treatment on each of these in here. And any treatment that extends beyond this area is unwanted and potentially harmful. The far-right image is the distribution of radiation that occurs with the Gamma Tile treatment. And the center and left images show radiation distribution from two currently available sophisticated radiation treatments externally. The red area shows the distribution of the therapeutic intensity radiation level and the green and blue areas have less intense but still potentially harmful zones of radiation. And as you can see, there's far less spread of radiation treatment outside the area needing treatment with the Gamma Tile. We're going to skip this slide, which isn't even up. We're going to skip that one. We're going to go to this one. So the Gamma Tile itself and the slides that follow, we want to show you why a manufactured Gamma Tile will fulfill these six measures, measures for many more patients. First of all, recalling the slide that compared the radiation dose distribution from the Gamma Tile and the external treatments, Gamma Tile can provide an effective option for patients with recurrent tumors who may be unable to receive additional radiation treatment either because of normal tissue limits have already been reached during prior external treatments, and this could be brain, scalp, or bone, or because of tumors that are too large or too close to vital structures to undergo repeat external radiation treatments without an unacceptable risk of harm. The other use is it can provide a safer option for patients than traditional internal radiation with I-125 brachytherapy or with the use of cesium-131 as there is no currently available way of rapidly and reliably achieving uniform spacing needed with these isotopes to avoid both cold and hot spots. So let's discuss some clinical trial results. I'm sorry for the dense slide, but in summary, to test out the Gamma Tile, we started a clinical trial in Phoenix in December of 2011. Every patient had failed radiation at least once previously. The tumor types treated were recurrent meningiomas, recurrent gliomas, and recurrent brain metastases. And the endpoint was timed to local progression for the prior treatment measured to the time of local progression after the treatment with the prototype Gamma Tile in the same patient at the same site. And the next slides detail these outcomes by tumor type and they're remarkably similar in a good way. This is our patients who had recurrent aggressive meningiomas and the median time to tumor recurrence, by which we mean the time by which half the group experienced the return of the tumor, is shown on the blue line and it was approximately nine months, pardon me, 11 months. With Gamma Tile treatment, the time to median recurrence hasn't been reached and that is because so few patients have failed. It's a calculation that can't be done. This is a highly clinically and statistically significant difference. So these are our current patients. Their median time to observation is about three times the median time to failure from the prior set, so we would have expected them to have failed by now. At the bottom of the slide are comparative outcomes from other types of treatments in patients similar to ours, what we would call historical controls, and they are not particularly encouraging. The next slide shows patients who had recurrent high-grade gliomas. Again, the median time to treatment at same site was 37 weeks, which is not particularly long, but pretty expected. And in this slide, we show the Gamma Tile treatment. Again, we haven't been able to reach the median time to failure and Again, we haven't been able to reach the median time to failure, and the comparative treatments are again not particularly encouraging. And the last group is for those patients with recurrent brain metastasis. Their time to failure was five months at median, and after gamma tile, we've had too few failures to calculate again. The encouraging statistics are present in the comparison here because, in fact, a different group working at Cornell has used CZ-131 by direct implant and achieved a local control of over 14 months. And as reasons we discussed a few slides ago, this remains very difficult to do with the available technology, but we view this as a positive outcome and validation of the potential for our technique as well. In summary, gamma tile offers a dramatic and meaningful change in the time to local recurrence compared to prior best available treatments. This is not unexpected because unlike biologics or chemotherapy, the tumor cytoeffect of radiation is at the DNA level and not cell-type specific. Complication is associated with currently available treatments, and this is a major drawback because when patients are not well is another uncomplicated cure is really our goal here. And so external beam radiation and current brachytherapy treatments in both meningioma and gliomas have been well documented, and the gamma tile results appear to be well tolerated and, to a good degree, less than the complication rates. The, what we call the SAEs, are the serious complication rates in those tumor types. Gamma tile reduces the need for re-operation. It is increased tumor control and decreased complication rates compared to current therapies result in fewer subsequent procedures. And the gamma tile is bio-compatible, so there's no need for an operation for the removal. And it reduces the need for additional visits compared to current therapies. The placement at the time of operation obviates the need for multiple return visits for external radiation, and the higher control rate and lower complication rates reduce the return rate for subsequent treatments. This is just a quick slide showing the difference in the timing of gamma tile versus external beam treatments. You can read it, but in summary, basically, gamma tile treatment pretty much concludes about the time external treatments has begun. We're going to skip the last two slides, which are clinical examples but very dramatic. And I thank you for your time.
Do we have any questions in the audience for Dr. Brockman? Moderator, may you open the lines for questions as well, please?
All lines have now been opened.
Hi, this is Dr. Barclay from CMS. Dr. Brockman, thank you for your presentation. I just wanted to ask about something you alluded to during your presentation is the method that's used at Cornell. And it just was described as a Cornell technique within the application. And my understanding is that they're using vicrol strands that are...
Can you repeat your question? We lost half of it.
Okay. I just wanted to hear Dr. Brockman describe the Cornell technique and the use of the vicrol strands that are embedded with CZ-131. And I take it that it is not FDA-approved, but I just wanted to hear his comments on that.
As I understand it, seeds are FDA-approved, vicrol strand and sutures FDA-approved. On this slide, and I'm not sure you have access to it, you can see on the trans-illuminated tile lines through there. And I did skip one, and I apologize. But this next slide, if you keep this one in mind, you can see that there is a piece of vicrol. The red markers show where the seeds are in the vicrol. Three are inside the tile, so you can't see them. And what Cornell does, and I know the physicians there well, is they use these as you would line a basket with basket stays or boat ribs. They cut them to the size of the cavity. They glue them directly to the sides of the cavity using a bio-glue and run the heck out of there. And this still takes about 18 to 22 minutes to do this for a small brain metastasis, which is their main series. So that the, as I alluded to, the downside here is they're still within the width of the vicrol in direct contact with the brain surface, but they do get a good tumor control with that technique.
Is that technique FDA-approved?
I would say that I have no standing to comment on that. I'm looking at someone in the audience here who would know, and he's nodding his head to say, yes, that's, the use is FDA-approved in brain, yes. The use of the seeds and the sutures are actually approved for tumors at any location in the body, but I'm not sure the technique, I'm not sure how techniques need approval. I mean, I don't know what you're in.
Sure. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions in the audience or on the line?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Okay, in the interest of time, we will forego our last break, but feel free to stand and stretch if you'd like. We will proceed to our next presenter. Our next presentation is KTEC-19. This is a drug used for the treatment of patients with refractory aggressive B-cell non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. Our presenter today is Dr. Frederick Locke. You wanted this, right? Did you want this?
I can use that.
Okay. We do want a break? Okay, just five minutes then. Okay. All right. And they will control the mic from here, so you don't have to adjust it because it's actually a little weak here. So you don't have to adjust it yet. They'll control everything. Okay? Apologize about that. We're going to go ahead and get started. We'll reconvene now. At this time, we will receive a presentation from Dr. Frederick Locke for KTEC-19. Again, this is a treatment for patients with refractory aggressive B-cell non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. Dr. Locke?
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much for having me here today. My name is Fred Locke. I am a member of the Department of Blood and Marrow Transplant and Cellular Immunotherapy at Moffitt Cancer Center in Tampa, Florida, the director of the Immune Cell Therapy Program at Moffitt. My disclosures as they relate to Kite Pharma are that I have received compensation as a scientific advisor to Kite. And I personally have been involved in the treatment of several dozen patients with KTEC-19. So I think I'm qualified to talk to you about this today. I'm also the, one of the co-lead investigators of the multi-center clinical trial, Zuma One, testing out KTEC-19. Oh, I think I went the wrong way. Okay. So if FDA-approved, KTEC-19 will represent the first and only approved treatment for its indicated population. The proposed indication is the treatment of adult patients with relapsed refractory aggressive B-cell non-Hodgkin's lymphoma who are ineligible for autologous stem cell transplant. This will be the first and only FDA-approved treatment for this patient population and the first engineered autologous cellular immunotherapy comprised of chimeric antigen receptor T cells, or CAR-T cells, that recognize CD19-expressing cancer cells and B-cells, and which has demonstrated efficacy in chemorefractory aggressive B-cell non-Hodgkin's lymphoma in a multi-centered clinical trial. KTEC-19 has received breakthrough therapy designation and orphan drug designation, and the rolling submission of the BLA was initiated in December of 2016. KTEC-19 will meet a substantial unmet treatment need for patients with aggressive B-cell non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, the most common subtype of which is diffuse... non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, the most common subtype of which is diffuse large B-cell lymphoma. Patients with diffuse large B-cell lymphoma can be treated with front-line chemotherapy called R-CHOP. Some of those patients may be cured. Unfortunately, some patients may have progressive disease or stable disease and become chemorefractory. Many of those patients will also relapse after R-CHOP chemotherapy and go on to receive second-line chemotherapies. They may not respond to those second-line chemotherapies and become chemorefractory. And if they do respond, they can go on to receive an autologous stem cell transplant. And patients who relapse within 12 months of an autologous transplant fare very poorly. In fact, patients who fail R-CHOP chemotherapy are very likely to die of their disease. The Scholar I study is the first patient-level retrospective meta-analysis of patients with chemorefractory diffuse large B-cell lymphoma. Scholar I took data from two prospective clinical trials and two large databases and pulled out the results from the patients who did not respond to their last chemotherapy, so who were in fact chemorefractory, as well as the patients who relapsed within 12 months after an autologous stem cell transplant. 635 patients were identified, and these again were patients who are receiving what is the current standard-of-care therapy. The Scholar I study confirmed the consistently poor outcomes regardless of the refractory subgroup of patients. In fact, on Scholar I, the complete response rate for patients who are chemorefractory was 26 percent. So again, patients who hadn't responded to their last chemotherapy or relapsed within one year of an autologous transplant had a 26 percent chance of having any clinical response to their next line of therapy. The chance of those patients having a complete response or complete disappearance of their lymphoma, 8 percent. So these are really poor prognosis patients, and these responses are similar across all subgroups in the analysis. You can see on the survival curve on the right, patients who fit these categories, over half of them are not alive by just over six months. So if FDA-approved, KTEC-19 will be the first engineered autologous CAR-T cell immunotherapy. It works through a unique mechanism of action. The way this therapy works is the patients have the T-cells or T-lymphocytes taken from autologous T-cells taken from them, and then they're redirected, they're engineered to target against CD19, which is on the surface of the lymphoma cells. This therapy was developed in conjunction with the National Cancer Institute through a research collaboration between Kite Pharma and the NCI. This slide shows the engineering schema and manufacturing process for KTEC-19. You can see on the left, the patient with chemorefractory aggressive B-cell lymphoma will have their T-cells taken out of their peripheral blood. Those cells will be then shipped fresh to the Kite Pharma manufacturing facility where they'll be engineered with the chimeric antigen receptor, or CAR. That construct will be placed into those T-cells, and those T-cells, you know, we all have T-cells that fight infections, all different kinds of infections, and they're ready for a fight. In this case, they're all redirected against CD19, which again is on the surface of the B-cells and the lymphoma tumor. The cells are grown up in the lab, they're then frozen and shipped back to the treatment This slide shows the KTEC-19 treatment schema. Again, on the left, patients undergo a procedure called leukopheresis, which is just to remove their T-cells. They undergo the, T-cells undergo the manufacturing process, and when ready, the patient undergoes conditioning chemotherapy at their treatment center, and they're then admitted to the hospital inpatient for infusion of KTEC-19 cells. All patients stay in the hospital for at least seven days for monitoring for KTEC-19-related toxicities. In clinical trials, patients who receive K19, KTEC-19, the prevalent toxicities associated with KTEC-19 are cytokine release syndrome and neurologic events. This slide shows the clinical program for KTEC-19. On the left, you'll see the Zuma I, or Study I, which is a pivotal Phase I, II multi-center open-label, single-arm study. It's for patients with aggressive refractory non-Hodgkin's lymphomas who are chemorefract, who have chemorefractory disease. This is analogous to patients analyzed on the Scholar I study. And as I've showed you, with standard-of-care therapies, these patients have a very poor prognosis, and that is why this is not a placebo-controlled or randomized study. In the Phase I portion, seven patients were treated, up to 69 years of age, and in the Phase II study on Zuma I, 62 patients were included in the interim analysis and ages up to 76 years old, with two cohorts, one for diffuse large B-cell lymphoma and a second for primary mediastinal B-cell and transformed follicular lymphoma. On the right, you'll see Study II, which is a study conducted at the National Cancer Institute using the same CAR construct and the same treatment schema, and we include this data so that you can see that results are comparable across different clinical So KTEC-19 demonstrated a substantially improved overall response rate as compared to the Scholar I study. In the pre-planned interim analysis of the Zuma I Phase II study, the overall response rate was 79 percent in these chemorefractory patients. And this, of course, compares very favorably to the historical control from Scholar I using standard-of-care therapy, where the overall response rate was 26 percent. So again, 79 percent with KTEC-19 as compared to 26 percent with a standard-of-care therapy. These responses were consistent across refractory subgroups and across age groups, and similar overall response rates were seen in the Phase I portion of the Zuma I study and in the KTEC-19 also led to an improvement in the complete response rate or complete disappearance of lymphoma in these patients as compared to standard-of-care therapy demonstrated on Scholar I. In the pre-planned interim analysis for Zuma I, the complete response rate was 52 percent. This again compares very favorably to the Scholar I data showing a complete response rate of 8 percent with standard-of-care therapy. Again, these results were consistent across age groups and in the phase, as well as consistent with results from the Phase I portion of the Zuma I study and complete response rates seen at the NCI. Treatment with KTEC-19 also leads to durable responses. In the Zuma I Phase II study, nearly 40 percent of patients have ongoing complete responses at three months of follow-up, and this follow-up is ongoing. In the Zuma I Phase I study, 43 percent of patients had ongoing complete response continuing at 12 months after therapy. And at the NCI, 47 percent of patients had complete responses that were ongoing, ranging from, at month three, ranging from six to 20 months and beyond. So again, by comparison, the Scholar I study reported an overall complete response rate of 8 percent and a median overall survival of 6.6 months. So the efficacy and safety data demonstrate positive risk-to-benefit ratio of KTEC-19 and a manageable toxicity profile. KTEC-19 has demonstrated a meaningful advantage over the standard-of-care. And in the Zuma I Phase II study, almost all patients experienced a grade III or higher adverse event with onset on or after the conditioning chemotherapy. These adverse events were managed according to standard-of-care. KTEC-19-related toxicities were self-limiting and generally reversible. This included grade III or higher cytokine release syndrome in 18 percent of patients with a median time to resolution of nine days, and neurotoxicity in 34 percent of patients with a median time to resolution of 18 days. The median length of hospitalization following KTEC-19 is 15 days. There were no cases of cerebral edema. There were no clinically important differences in adverse event rates across age groups, including cytokine release syndrome and neurotoxicity. And by the cutoff date for the Zuma I Phase II interim analysis, two subjects or 3 percent had died due to KTEC-19-related adverse events. So in summary, the interim clinical study results demonstrate that KTEC-19 represents a substantial clinical improvement, and if FDA-approved, KTEC-19 will represent the only FDA-approved treatment for adult patients with relapsed refractory aggressive B-cell non-Hodgkin's lymphoma who are ineligible for autologous stem cell transplant. As compared to today, where there are no curative options, patients treated with KTEC-19 will have a substantially improved overall response rate as compared to the standard-of-care shown in Scholar I, with generally consistent results across all refractory subgroups and age groups, a substantially improved complete response rate compared to Scholar I study, which can occur quite quickly after therapy with KTEC-19. And these responses can be durable, lasting up to a year and beyond, following a single treatment of KTEC-19, with a positive risk-to-benefit ratio and a manageable toxicity profile. So KTEC-19 will provide a meaningful advantage over the standard-of-care, and KTEC-19 is a very important advance in the treatment of aggressive non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. And with that, I'm happy to take questions.
At this time, all lines are now unmuted. If you would like to take any questions over the phone lines.
Okay, we note that we have no further questions for Dr. Locke. We'd like to thank him for his presentation.
Ma, that's fine.
Okay, our final presentation for the day will be a presentation on Vixios. This is a treatment for adult patients with acute myeloid leukemia, and our presenter today is Dr. Jeffrey Lancet. Welcome again, Dr. Lancet. Thank you. Yes, you might have it. It's already turned on.
My name is Jeff Lancet, and I'm pleased to be here. Thanks to CMS and to Jazz Pharmaceuticals for asking me to speak today on behalf of the new drug, CPX-351, also known as Vixios. I am the Chair of the Department of Malignant Hematology at Moffitt Cancer Center, also, as Dr. Locke just mentioned, and in Tampa, Florida. I have had the unique opportunity to be able to work with CPX-351 for over 10 years now. I was involved with the original Phase I studies and have continued to work with this compound right through the completion of the Phase III studies, so I believe I'm well-qualified to speak to the merits of this particular agent. So as part of my disclosure, I'll just mention that I have received consulting fees from Jazz Pharmaceuticals in the past, and my travel for this particular meeting is also being reimbursed by Jazz Pharmaceuticals. So Vixios, or CPX-351, if approved, will become the only drug approved for the therapy of acute myeloid leukemia in over four decades, and that's not an easy accomplishment, to say the least. The proposed indication would be for patients with AML, and with this particular agent, using this particular complex technology platform, you have the ability to deliver a combination of two different drugs, two already-approved chemotherapy drugs, Citerabine and Donor Rubison, in a fixed molar ratio that is taken up by the bone marrow very exclusively and preferentially within the leukemia cells, giving it an advantage over other types of drugs. This particular compound was granted breakthrough therapy designation, fast-track designation, and orphan drug designation, and a rolling NDA submission began in September of 2016. So I'd like just to point out that CPX-351, we believe, meets a substantial unmet clinical need. And the unmet clinical need is in older adults with AML in particular, because this is a highly incurable disease in anybody over age 60. Even in younger patients, it's mostly incurable, although advances are being made. But in the older patients, it's a particularly morbid disease with a worse prognosis related to a more complex disease biology, more chemotherapy resistance, and poorer tolerance of conventional agents. And interestingly, over half of, over half of patients with AML over age 60 may still receive no therapy at all for their disease, based upon SEER Medicare data that's been reported recently. So clearly, an unmet need for a very high-risk group of patients. The standard-of-care, if you want to call it that right now, currently is in the form of free drugs, given as Citerabine and Donor Rubison, otherwise known as 3 plus 7, where you give Donor Rubison on three days, for three days in a row, and Citerabine as a continuous infusion for seven days in a row. And as I mentioned before, there have not been any new drugs approved in the past four decades, with the exception of Gemtuzumab or Mylotarg, which was approved in the early 2000 and then withdrawn from the commercial market back in 2010 due to concerns about toxicity and possible lack of efficacy. So I alluded before to the fact that this is an area of very high unmet need, and as you can see here, this, these are Southwest Oncology Group data looking at outcomes in patients treated with conventional chemotherapy for their AML. And as you can clearly see, patients, looks like my pointer's not working here, but patients who are over age 55 had a significantly worse outcome in terms of complete response rates, overall survival, and median disease-free survival compared with patients less than age 55. And these types of results have been reproduced over and over again in the literature, and it's become very clear that the outcomes are much worse as you get older. And in particular, patients over age 65 have particularly poor outcomes, both in terms of response rates and survival. Now, preclinical studies have clearly shown that CPX-351 has a very unique and distinct mechanism of action, which we'll get into. The advantage, or the novelty of the drug, is that it takes two already-known drugs, Citerabine and Donor Rubison, and places them, formulates them into a combination with a fixed molar ratio that has been shown to be synergistic. Now, if you give two drugs together, not, at various concentrations, they may actually be antagonistic or additive and not necessarily synergistic. But a five-to-one ratio of Citerabine to Donor Rubison has been found to be synergistic. And in this particular agent, through this vehicle, you're able to package both Citerabine and Donor Rubison in this optimal fixed molar ratio. The drug itself is delivered directly to the bone marrow and taken up whole, the liposome is taken up whole by the leukemic cells, and in fact is preferentially taken up by leukemic cells compared to normal cells, so it has that advantage as well. The encapsulation, of course, maintains the synergistic ratio because the drugs are not being broken down significantly in the circulation. There is a minimized impact of drug transporters, such as multidrug resistance and others, and this type of packaging, this type of formulation allows for prolonged exposure of both drugs for much, for a much longer period of time than you would expect if the drugs were given as a free-drug cocktail. And we also recognize that if you give Citerabine and Donor Rubison as free drugs, you cannot achieve the same type of effect of maintaining a synergistic ratio as you can with this particular technology. You just can't do it in the free-drug formulation. So this is kind of a busy slide, but it outlines some of the preclinical data where animals, rats in particular, were given radio-labeled Donor Rubison and Citerabine either in the form of CPX-351 or as free-drug cocktail. And following certain time points, the animals were euthanized, they were flash-frozen, and then thin slices were developed to, and tested on radiographic film to determine the actual content of the drugs in various tissues throughout the body of the animal. And what I'd like to point out is that when Donor Rubison and Citerabine are given in the form of CPX-351, you can see that at various time points after administration, there is clear accumulation of these drugs within the bone marrow, shown here in these red circles, which represents the rat's femur, the primary site of bone marrow, and that this concentration which represents the rat's femur, the primary site of bone marrow, and that this concentration is much increased relative to other body tissues. So the dark areas represent increased drug concentration, and you can see that it's much higher in the bone marrow, not just right after the infusion, but also up to 48 hours after the infusion. This is not the case when the drugs are administered as free cocktails, and you can see that the drugs are very rapidly distributed throughout all the tissues, not just the bone marrow, within one hour. And then by 24 and 48 hours, basically, the drugs are gone, and there's no real, clear evidence of any further activity, in particular, within the bone marrow. So a clear pharmacokinetic advantage to this type of drug in the fact that, given-- in the sense that it remains in the bone marrow preferentially. Preclinical studies have also shown that the CPX-351 or Vixios drug is preferentially taken up by leukemic cells compared to normal, non-leucaemic progenitor cells. So as I mentioned, I've been involved with several aspects of this drug, from initial conception to the Phase III study, and I was the lead investigator on the Phase III randomized study shown here. Study 301 was a randomized multi-center trial comparing CPX-351 versus 7+3 chemotherapy in older adults with high-risk or secondary AML, randomized in a one-to-one fashion between CPX and 7+3, again, over age 60. And although the majority of patients were between ages 60 and 69, a significant minority of patients were also over age 70. CPX was administered as a 90-minute infusion on days 1, 3, and 5, whereas 7+3 was given, as I mentioned previously, with cytarabine as a seven-day continuous infusion and donorubicin on days 1, 2, and 3. And the primary efficacy results are shown here. We presented these at the 2016 ASCO meeting, and the key finding was that the overall survival of these patients was better for those that had received CPX-351 compared to those that had received 7+3. The median survival advantage was about three and a half months, and the hazard ratio for death was about 31% lower with CPX-351 during the entire course of the study. We also noted that in a prespecified age subgroup analysis, that there really was not a major distinction in outcomes based on age. So patients aged 60 to 69 and 70 to 75 both had survival improvement if they received CPX-351. The advantage was not limited to, for example, just the younger group of patients. In terms of toxicity, there were a similar number of grade III to grade V adverse events that were treatment-emergent in both arms. The most common included febrile neutropenia, pneumonia, and hypoxia. We also observed what may have been a lower risk of early death with CPX-351, as shown here. Death at day 60 was only about 14% in the CPX arm compared to 21% in the 7+3 arm. And what's-- what was really interesting was that this disparity may have been related to the fact that we observed fewer deaths that were attributable to progressive AML in that timeframe with CPX compared to 7+3. And as a physician, as physicians who treat AML, we recognize that early death can occur in very aggressive diseases related to lack of efficacy of the drug, not necessarily toxicity of the drug. So the fact that this particular drug was able to perhaps reduce early death due to mitigating disease progression, I think, was an important and interesting observation. Deaths due to adverse events themselves were not different between the two arms. There were fewer deaths during the treatment phase of the entire study, and there were also substantially fewer deaths with CPX-351 during the follow-up phase of the study compared to 7+3. Now, we also wanted to assess response rates as an important endpoint, because we recognize that historically, with aggressive chemotherapy, complete response rates are typically correlating very well with overall survival, and this held true for this study as well. In the overall population of patients, looking at both complete response and complete response with incomplete count recovery, the rates of overall response were higher with CPX compared to 7+3, and the results were statistically significant. And we believe that this is important because response rates, not only do they improve quality of life of the patient, but they also are prerequisite to receiving a future bone marrow transplant. And although bone marrow transplants are not exceedingly common in this patient population, they can still be considered part of the care continuum, such that if you can get a patient into remission, then you have a chance to offer them a potentially curative bone marrow transplant. So we looked at that, and we found that in patients on this particular 301 study that were fortunate enough to be able to go to transplant, the patients who received a bone marrow transplant and that had also received CPX-351 as their initial therapy did significantly better than patients who had received 7+3 as their initial therapy. And of course, this was not a randomized trial unto itself. It was a landmark analysis done at the time of transplant. But the arms were very well-matched in terms of baseline characteristics of patients going into transplant between the CPX-treated patients and the 7+3-treated patients. And as you can see, the median survival after transplant has not yet been reached for those patients who went through therapy with CPX-351 initially. The reasons for this are not entirely clear yet. It could be related to a better or deeper remission that's achieved with CPX-351. It could be related to the fact that maybe patients who went through CPX therapy were in better physical condition at the time of the transplant. These are still issues being worked out. But nonetheless, a very intriguing finding suggesting that the transplant end of it was supporting the overall survival advantage with CPX-351. We also found that in this study, about a third of the patients were able to go to transplant, which is a higher number than you would expect in the older-age population with AML, most of whom do not typically get to transplant. So that's another statistic to keep an eye on. And as I mentioned, the response rates overall were about 48% with CPX versus around 37% with 7+3 as the overall response rate to these drugs. But a similar proportion of patients entered transplant in a state of remission. So it wasn't like patients who had CPX-351 went to transplant, you know, in a remission state, and those that got 7+3 did not. But nonetheless, a higher response rate with CPX compared to 7+3. And then finally, I'll finish by just talking about a little bit of data that I think supports the use of CPX-351 in AML. Study 205 was a trial, a randomized Phase II trial, in patients with first-relapse AML, another very poor-risk situation. And in this randomized study, patients were randomized in a 2:1 fashion to either CPX or the control arm, which was an investigator's choice of some type of intensive salvage regimen, in patients below age 65. And in this particular study, what was observed was that in a very high-risk group of patients, known as the high-risk EPI group, these are patients that are typically over age 45, had a short duration of initial remission or prior transplant, these patients did better with CPX than they did with 7+3, with a survival advantage of around 2.4 months, and a lower, perhaps lower, 60-day mortality, and a higher overall response rate compared to 7-- compared to traditional salvage regimens. So evidence to suggest that this drug not only is active in an untreated population, but also in another very high-risk group of patients, namely, the patients with relapsed AML, with acceptable safety and 60-day mortality rates, despite the fact that these patients did have a higher incidence of grade III to grade IV neutropenia and thrombocytopenia as part of this study. So in conclusion, I believe that CPX represents a major clinical improvement for AML patients, one that we haven't seen in a long time. And through its technology, it's really the only cancer-- anti-cancer agent that is able to deliver two drugs in a fixed synergistic ratio that is maintained at the time of delivery and preferentially taken up within the bone marrow. If approved, this will represent the only new treatment for AML patients in over 40 years, except for, of course, the gemtuzumab, which was withdrawn from the market. The 301 study for patients with higher-- with high-risk AML or secondary AML over age 60 has demonstrated substantial clinical improvement compared to 7+3, with superior outcomes of overall survival, response rates, perhaps a lower risk of early death attributable to better disease control in the short term, and may importantly provide a bridge to allogeneic stem cell transplant for this very poor-risk group of patients. Study 205, in the first-relapse setting, also revealed that there was greater antileucaemic efficacy in patients who were in the poor-risk subgroup of this particular cohort under age 65, and that the CPX fared-- performed better than intensive salvage therapy, again, with a very acceptable safety profile. So with that, thank you for sticking around and hearing me out, and I appreciate your attention, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
At this time, all lines are now unmuted on the phone lines if you have any questions.
Yes?
Hi, I'm Karen O'Connell, Medical Officer. I'm sure you heard with Division of Acute Care. Quick question for you regarding the ratio of 5:1 and its relationship, if any, to the 7+3 therapy. Was the initial goal with the 7+3 therapy to create the 5:1 ratio? Or they're totally unrelated?
Well, the ratio itself is, when the drug is administered to patients, actually is the equivalent of the current total dose of donorubicin and cytarabine. So we give at 100 units per meter squared is the equivalent of 45 milligrams per meter squared of donorubicin and 100 milligrams per meter squared of cytarabine. So whether the intention initially was to mimic the exact dose of cytarabine and donorubicin, I don't believe that was the initial intent, was to mimic the exact dose, as it was to really achieve the proper ratio. Because you can utilize higher doses of both drugs in different ratios and actually not achieve the same effect.
So what was trying to be achieved in the 7+3 regimen?
In this Phase III study? I don't--
In general, so you-- so it's our understanding that the 7+3 regimen, which has been around for quite some time, was the goal with the 7+3 regimen to get to the 5:1 ratio?
You know, I'd have to say I can't answer that question in terms of the original development of 7+3, whether it was based on the development of a ratio versus just absolute drug dosing. I believe that it was more related to just maximizing the total amounts of both drugs to the level of tolerability and then determined to be given in patients in that regard. I'm not aware of whether it was designed purposefully to achieve a molar ratio, given the fact that molar ratios can't really be maintained in vivo for any period of time because of normal tissue distribution.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any additional questions, any on the line? Okay, we note we have no further questions, so, Dr. Lancet, we thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to thank all of our speakers and all of our presenters for joining us today. We appreciate each and every one of you traveling from near and far. I'd like to thank all of you in the audience, as well as our telephone audience. By way of reminder, I'd like to remind everyone that our comments are due by 5:00 p.m. on March 3rd. Those comments can be sent via email or to our mailing address. Again, thank you all for attending the Fiscal Year 2018 New Technology Add-on Payment Town Hall meeting. Thank you. Thanks.